Okay, ready? Okay. It is six P M. We are now live. I would like to call to order our February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the school committee. The time is six o'clock. Those who can, please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do want to know, uh, it is the mayor's birthday, so very happy birthday to him. He is not here today. And Ms. Bronson Rizzo, um, her third grandchild is currently being born, so wish sixth, sixth, third from her, not one son. But wishing them all, uh, just a safe delivery and that they can walk up home as safe, um, baby. And her daughter-in-law can also do well, and so that's why they are not here. But with that, could we please have a roll call, Mr. Dr. Garcia?
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Absent.
Mr. Anthony Cagiano?
Here.
Mr. John Kingston?
Here.
Mrs. Aisha Milbury Ellis?
Present.
Ms. Jacqueline Montarosso?
Present.
Mr. Frederick Sinala?
Present.
Mayor Patrick Kiff?
Absent.
We do have a quorum, so with that, we will get started. Uh, first, uh, we have any recognition from any members? No? Okay. Then we are going to go ahead with the consent calendar. Can we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Absent.
Mr. Anthony Cagiano?
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Aisha Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jacqueline Montarosso?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick Sinala?
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kiff?
Absent. Okay, the consent calendar is approved. Before we move to the student rep report, I know there are some members of the public here to speak. Just so you know, there's a sign-in sheet in the back. If you haven't, just have time to sign in. And with that, we'll pass it over to our student rep.
All right. Um, it is good to be here since we weren't able to give our student rep report last time, in which I'll go into depth about. Um, so basically, moving forward, um, this year, we are, um, we have the Student Advisory Board, um, as per general law of Massachusetts, uh, making sure that we're in with that. Um, I'm just going to have for my next part, the junior student rep come up here. Because recently, we had, um, members of the Student Advisory Board go to A C Wayland along with the R M A to go visit these, uh, school, the student councils and student governments there, and basically talk about what that experience was like.
Um, yeah, so me and our other member, Ada Luati, we went to two middle, one middle school, one elementary school. We went to the A C Wayland first. The kids were filled with curiosity on like what we did, and they were very excited to hear from older kids in school. I know they had a lot of ideas for clubs, and they were working on how to work on their student council, since it's all new and they haven't had one in years. But overall, they had a lot of ideas for clubs, like a wellness club that they wanted in all of schools. And they also wanted more like cultural things, so that everyone could gather together and celebrate. And those were some of the ideas that I wrote on the board while we were at the school. Um, and then we went to R M A, where their student council is new as well. And they had different ideas for the future, like similar to the Wayland. When we brought it up, they showed their support for it, which was community engagement nights. And they haven't done anything so far yet for their council, because as I said, um, these schools are newly implementing these councils. But, yeah.
Yeah, it's exciting to see advocacy from all of these schools. I know recently, we also went to the Garfield. And as somebody who was in the student government in, uh, both A C Wayland and Garfield during my time there, it's exciting to go back and see the new students who are going to be advocating in that school. Um, moving on, we have even more advocacy. We have, um, advocacy for menstrual products. So Revere High School has our Feminist Empowerment Club, which has been advocating for menstrual products in all public school buildings. And, um, in our school, we do have flow, uh, installed in all of our bathrooms. And essentially, flow is, is, it is, um, these dispensers that have menstrual products, so you know, pads and tampons. Um, essentially, these, uh, the feminist empowerment movement want, uh, all menstrual products to be in public buildings. So they are going out to the city council, uh, meeting, which that was dated for yesterday. And of course, big thank you to the, uh, teacher advisors, Mr. Carlson and Ms. Danolo, who are helping these students along with their journey for advocacy. Um, club reports, I'm just going to speed along with it. Um, basically, very briefly, uh, the Our Model United Nations Club, uh, recently attended the Bosman Conference. And along with that, the Class of two thousand and twenty-six is setting up their junior prom. I know there's a, there's a lot of exciting things that are happening in multiple student councils. And now with three months remaining left before seniors leave, the Class of two thousand and twenty-five is getting everything ready, from prom to getting tassels and robes and all of that. All right, moving on to the next part, we've had some exci, we have an exciting month for the J R O T C. So the J R O T C C M P team competed at Camp Perry over February break, and were able to take third place in the Army Regional March. So very, very exciting. Uh, along with that, we also have the J R O T C arching team, who competed in the C O M A L competition at East Boston High, and they were able to rank number one in ranking overall. And along with that, um, it seems that there was a duplicate in both of those slides. But, uh, what I will say is, I guess, just, um, bringing this up now, that the Revere High J R O T C Patriot Battalion will be seeking school committee approval for the drill team to participate in the U S A C C Army Drill National Competition in Daytona, Florida. So just coming up and just making sure that the, uh, committee is aware that that is happening. Another thing that I do want to mention that is not on this slide is, uh, I just want to bring up the, the topic of accessibility of school committee meetings. I know we've had a couple of talks about that in the past. But recently, um, as I mentioned at the start, uh, the student representatives, including me and Jaleah, were not at the meeting last time because there was, um, miscommunication on the school committee times. So, uh, we rely mostly on the Revere Minutes and Agendas page, which shows the whole schedule of meetings, including city council meetings and school committee meetings. We had checked that page numerous times, only for it to have not been updated. And talking to other students and consulting with other teachers and people who are interested in coming to school committee meetings, I've got, I've heard from a lot of people that when it comes to school committee meetings, that they simply just are always unable to figure out what the times are, or things are not updated to the way that they should be. Um, even for this meeting, up until recently, I had to double-check and confirm to make sure that that meeting was on the schedule. And, um, Robin was super, super helpful on making sure that we were able to make this deadline for this, for this meeting. So that's something that I just want to bring attention to and make sure that we are putting a larger effort into making sure that, um, the dates are posted, the times are posted, and that the public is knowledgeable on what these committees are. And that's it for the student rep report.
So, um, uh, on that point, just our meetings have always been at five and at six P M. And it's always posted at least a week before every meeting. So if you do run into any issues on seeing it on the screen, please feel free to email, because our times are always posted and the agendas are posted according to open meeting law with ample time for people to know. So our meetings are always at five in the library for the committee of the whole, and at six P M. And here, always on the third Tuesday, unless there is a break like this month, and we move it to the fourth. Um, I did, oh, first, any questions on anything else before I?
Um, no questions, just a comment. I just wanted to, um, say that I'm happy to see the, um, Student Senate working with the elementary, well, the middle school and elementary schools and seeing that come to fruition. We had talked about it at length, and, um, you know, Jackie was good enough to, to make the recommendation that we have a unified, um, collaboration between the schools. So it's nice to see that you guys are visiting with the schools and, and getting their feedback. I think it's empowering for the younger students as well as for you, and it, it gives them a sense of support and mentorship without even realizing it. So this is all wonderful stuff. I hope you guys stick with it. I know you're, some of you will be gone in three months, but maybe let's have it in place, so that way, um, there's a second, you know, follow-up with them to ensure that they're, they're staying on track. Thank you. Good report.
Thank you.
Uh, just a few more from me. On terms of accessibility, we also want to share that our public comment policy was finally updated, and it was translated thanks to the district team into all our prevalent languages. So now people can find it in their common language on our website to know how to participate in our meetings as well. And this was really spearheaded by the Student Senate in sharing accessibility. So thank you for working with us on that. I did have a few questions when it comes to the menstrual products. My first question is, are these products being restocked in a timely fashion at the schools?
Um, from my information, and partially occasionally helping out with FEM restocking the products, uh, the products are, for the most part, restocked in a timely fashion. It is done right now by the students of FEM. Um, so basically, what happens is that, uh, the advisors get a shipment of flow products, and then the students are able to, with a key, unlock the dispensaries and fill it up with whatever product is needed, whatever, uh, whether that be tampons or pads, it's able to be filled. Um, of course, uh, if there's any question, other questions, I could get you in contact with a FEM member, but that's what I know from what I've been seeing.
Thank you. And then I just want to echo the shout-out to Jaleah and her sister, who's in middle school, where they both spoke at the city council meeting yesterday and left. Our city councilor members and members of the public are very impressed with their public comments. It was great to see our young leaders. And they also sent in twelve letters of written testimony from other students who really gathered together their voice. And, uh, just a moment of appreciation to Mr. Carlson and Ms. Danolo, who also stayed at that meeting the entire time after teaching all day to support the students and making sure they had chaperones there. So thank you to all our teachers for all they do. Okay? Uh, with that, we will move to public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak on anything on the agenda, whether via Zoom or in person, I ask that you please, um, you can start to stand and line up, and I'll ask Robin to pass me the sign-up sheet. And then we'll call people. The way public comment works is that you have two minutes. We ask that you start, um, by stating your name and just the street you live on. You don't need to say the number, especially if you're a minor. And then, uh, people can continue to sign up until the end of public comment, so there's extra sheets in the back. So with that, uh, the first person we have signed up for public comment is Jaleah Figueroa. Okay. Uh, Jamila? And then when you come up, there's a little button with like a face and three lines, that's what you click, so that it turns on. So once you start speaking, I will start the timer.
Hi, everyone. Safe havens in schools are important because they help students feel safe, which can lead to better academic performance and mental health for many students, especially those with immigrant families. School isn't a place of safety. It's filled with fear because they worry about being separated from their families while they're being dropped off at school. When Border Patrol is allowed near schools, it creates stress and worry for students. They can't focus on their work or feel comfortable with their friends because they're always thinking about what could happen. No one should have to feel like that when they're try, just trying to learn. Schools should be a place where all students feel safe and supported. Every kid should be able to focus on their education with the fear, without the fear of being taken away from their family. That's why it's important to make schools safe for everyone, no matter where they come from. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Jaleah Figueroa.
Um, my name's Jaleah Figueroa. I'm from Vane Street. I stand before you today to advocate for a vital resolution, the establishment of our school as a designated safe haven for all students, regardless of their background or circumstances. Every student deserves to walk through these doors each day feeling secure, respected, and empowered to learn. By establishing our district as a safe haven, we can empower every student to reach their full potential and create a truly welcoming environment for all. Amidst the uncertainty and chaos of our current state of society, establishing ourselves as a safe haven school is not just a policy, but a commitment to creating a space where every student can thrive, learn, and dream. Let us stand together to make this vision a reality for our school community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have, is it Jamila?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. I want to talk about why schools should be safe place where Border Patrol can't come. Some students, especially with those with immigrant families, are really scared that while they're at school, someone could come and take their parents away. This fear makes it hard to focus on learning and enjoying school. When Border Patrol comes near schools, it makes kids feel unsafe and worried. They shouldn't have to be afraid when they're trying to learn and spend time with their friends. School should be a safe place and safety and support, not fear. Every, every student deserves to go to school without worrying about being separated from their family. Let's make sure all that, that all kids can come to school, learn, and grow without fear of immigration enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily.
Hi, everyone. I want to talk about why schools should be a safe place, where Border Patrol can't come. Some kids like me have families who aren't from here, and they're really scared that Border Patrol might take them away while they're at school. When Border Patrol comes to school, it makes kids really scared. They can't think about their homework or play with their friends because they're too worried. No kid should feel scared like that at school. School is supposed to be a place where we feel happy and safe, so we can learn and play. Every kid should be able to come to school and not worry about being taken from their family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Edwin. I believe stepped out, so we can wait till the end. Um, and then we have one more member signing up, so you can just come up after you've signed up. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Dr. Kelly?
No.
Okay. While they finish signing up, I'll pass it over to our student rep, who also wants to have some public comment.
My name is Alsabil Mendoza. Uh, I live on Philomena Avenue. In early August of two thousand and seven, my house was raided by ICE, or Immigration and Customs Enforcement. At the time, I was only five days old. My grandparents from both sides of my family, coming from El Salvador and Morocco, were staying at our home in Revere. While I was obviously not old enough to recall this event, my parents and my grandparents recall this vividly. My abuelita, who witnessed her own grandchild, my cousin, being detained, said, "Is this the freedom that America is offering? If so, I want to go back home." My grandmother on my mother's side, a devout Muslim, was equally horrified. This is the reality that the kids of America are living through today. This type of experience is extremely traumatizing to anyone, especially my mother, who is sitting in the audience, who still flinches when somebody knocks loudly on the door nearly eighteen years later. Our students are not criminals, who are a threat to national security, but rather those who carry a legacy of their families by studying in the United States. An undocumented student has the same potential as a documented student. They have the potential to change society and America for the better. I'm speaking out for the passage of resolution for safe haven, as the intrusion of ICE in our schools is pure distraction towards learning. I'm speaking out because families don't deserve to be ripped apart for the sake of education. Please vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Endurance.
Hi, sorry. Um, my name is Endurance, and I live on Pearl Ave in Revere. I am a senior at Revere High School. I am the daughter of immigrant parents. I am the sister of an immigrant, and I myself am an immigrant. I was born and raised in Cameroon, and I moved to this country when I was eleven years old. I went to G M S. I've, I went to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in G M S. Um, when I started high school, I found my place. Revere High School is so diverse and so rich in culture, and I never felt more at home in all the years that I've been in this country. This school has been my safe haven for the past four years, and for the past couple of months, it has been anything but that. It has been a place where I have been terrified to walk into every single day, because I'm not sure what could happen. I am in this country legally. My entire family is in this country legally, and yet that fear does not leave us. Do you want to know what my ten-year-old brother asked me as we watched the inauguration? He asked me if we're going to get kicked out, too. You have no idea how heartbreaking and terrifying it was to hear my ten-year-old brother ask me that question. And the worst part of it all is that I could not tell him no. I could not look him in the eyes and lie to him. Over the past couple of months, since the Trump administration and ICE has been raiding schools everywhere, not a single member of, of, sorry. Not a single person who I look up to in the, in the office and the school committee has mentioned a single word about this. Not a single person has spoken to the students or the teachers or the staff in this school about how terrifying it is to see schools like Everett, to see all schools in Chelsea get raided and wonder if we're next. Not a single person has come up to students or staff to just have a conversation about it. Being a safe haven school is not a want, it is a necessity. You say this will put a target on our backs. With all due respect, you have no idea what it's like to have a target on your back. I have had a target on my back since I moved into a country where my skin color has been a crime. I have had a target on my back since I heard that Trump was running for president. I have had a target on my back since he was inaugurated. This, Revere Public Schools need to be a safe haven, because students should not be terrified of walking through the doors that they have walked in through every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Endurance. Any final public comment or members wishing to speak? I want to also acknowledge we received over thirty, um, written submissions of public comment via email, also asking, um, for passage of the resolution. And some members received even more emails, um, one-on-one, also asking for support of the resolution. So I'm just entering that into the record. With that, can we have a motion to close public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment has now closed. Thank you all for speaking. The resolution will be voted on later, um, in the agenda for those who can still stay. We will now move on to the superintendent report. As Dr. Kelly pulls that up, the first, um, item under her report is the Wayland presentations. If there's any members from the school who want, you can go ahead and start to stand up.
Um, the first item on the superintendent's report is a presentation by the Wayland School, and I want to, um, welcome our principal and the staff that's, that's joining her here today. I'm sure they'll all introduce themselves, um, and share some information on the monthly morning meetings.
Thank you so much. Good evening, school committee members. Good evening, Dr. Kelly. Good evening to Dr. Garcia as well. My name is Rachel Shanley. I am the building principal at A C Wayland. My team and I are really proud and excited to be here to share about a structure that we have set at the Wayland School called Monthly Morning Meeting, also known as M M M. Next slide, please. Thank you. So a few years ago, we had a teacher at the Wayland School that came to the admin team with an idea to have a school-wide Zoom once a month. We're a really big elementary school. We set up a committee of folks to kind of join in, comprised of admin teachers, um, some coaches, some interventionists as well, and specialists. And we spent some time with lots of discussion around what that might look like for this whole school-wide Zoom. Teachers, staff, um, office staff, everyone joins in, including all classes. We all Zoom once a month, and it's really a time for us to spend building a community, um, for, like I said, a really large school. For each monthly morning meeting, we spend time growing as a whole school, learning together, time to celebrate. We celebrate students, um, and achievements, and we always finish each Zoom with a dance and a song at the end. So it's a lot of fun. Next slide, please. So a few of the things that we blend into the M M M are academics, social-emotional learning, also called S E L, and community building as well. At this time, I'm going to introduce our math coach, Candy Conley. Candy will come up and spend some time discussing the core values and the monthly themes that we cover with M M M.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, so the monthly mo, oh, next slide, please. Sorry. Oh, no, sorry, back. I'm sorry. Yep, all right. The monthly morning meeting has really, um, sparked joy for the whole Wayland School community. And it's really great to be able to connect the whole school through these monthly Zoom meetings to help promote academics, S E L, and community. And it's a great opportunity for us to all learn about and practice the same core values through these monthly themes. Next slide. Okay. So we choose one core value as a theme for each month and focus on it through stories, songs, videos, audience participation games, and activities. For example, in October, we discussed friendship, and the closing song that month was "You've Got a Friend in Me" from the movie Toy Story. In November, we focused on kindness, since World Kindness Day was November thirteenth. And we talked about ways to be kind in the classroom, at home, and in the community. December's theme was respect, and the focus was on respecting self, others, and things. Students participated in an activity where they gave a thumbs up or thumbs down to different scenarios as they decided if they were or weren't respectful. And then turning the focus to growth mindset in January was the perfect way to start a new year. And last month's theme was compassion. And just having this common language around these themes throughout the whole school community has been very beneficial to all. And next, um, grade-three teacher Juliana Neso will speak about the current processes of M, Monthly Morning Meeting and teacher resources that we use.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Juliana Neso, and I'm the third-grade teacher at A C Wayland. So I want to speak a little bit about the celebrations that we do during Monthly Morning Meeting. The students get really excited to see if they're going to win an award for the S T math, um, the Golden Tray Award, or the literacy highlights. So for S T math awards, we like to congratulate students who are either getting really, really close to a hundred percent for the year, or we also really like to focus on, um, students and classrooms who are making the most progress in the last month. So we can, we make sure that we are celebrating everyone. We also look at the Golden We also look at the Golden Tray winners where we like to make sure that we promote positive behavior in all places in the school. And one of them is in the lunchroom where we make sure that there's high expectations so that students are cleaning up their area, they're being respectful to the workers, and they are really excited to find out if they're going to be the winner for that year, for that month. And they're able to get a golden tray that they can have in their classroom for the month and then they, we pass it on each month. We also have literacy highlights because we want to make sure that we're focusing on math and literacy. So we always choose a classroom who is doing really well in reading or writing and we make sure that we congratulate them by being specific. Like the Ms. Neso's classroom is doing really well with their expository nonfiction unit. Something specific so that they can celebrate and hear about it. And also connected to literacy, we also have a digital bookshelf which is connected to that monthly theme that I will show you in the next slide. So this is an example of the mindfulness bookshelf. So there are links to each book. So the teacher can use it as a resource, but the teacher can also give it to the students to use as a resource if there's any time during reading to do independent reading. It's directly connected to that theme so that they can get a better sense of that theme through ELA. And I will now introduce Nicole Cassada. She is the assistant principal.
Good evening, everyone. So a new element we added this year to MMM is the celebration piece. And this is based on the monthly core value. The celebration has been widely received by staff, students, and families. The first, the theme is introduced on the Zoom in the morning at MMM. The students will listen to a read aloud, watch a skit, or participate in an interactive activity. Next, the teachers are presented with a look for to connect the theme and award the student. Then the students are chosen by a teacher or a staff member and announced over the intercom by Mr. Golucci and the students wait patiently to hear that announcement over the intercom. The final piece and the most exciting part of the MMM is that the students are awarded with a parent letter that goes home and they're really proud of that to take that home to their families, letting them know that they've received this award. And they are given a small token of appreciation and a 20-minute celebration activity with peers that are also being celebrated that month. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Golucci, assistant principal.
Thank you, everyone. So I am here to talk about sort of the end of that cycle. We like to kind of start the planning process for next month, but we also like to share out with caregivers. And we've been doing that in two ways, one of which Ms. Cassada just spoke to is the parent letter home. This parent letter home just kind of goes home to every kid that was nominated and selected for their core value. One of the kind of key phrases that speaks out to me, out of hundreds of students, your student was chosen, really kind of personalizes it. And then in italics in the middle there is the reason from the teacher on the right-hand side, is the reason from the teacher why that student was nominated. So I think we have a student shown for the growth mindset celebration. So that teacher gave us some input as to why that student was selected and that goes into the letter to be sent home. The other way that we're sharing with all caregivers, not just the ones that are celebrated, but all caregivers, is through parent square. At the end of each celebration, I typically will post a message to let people know how many students were chosen and by who. So that's an exciting part too, is we don't tell the kids who's nominating. So sometimes it's the classroom teachers, sometimes it can be specialists, interventionists, calf staff. So we like to keep them on their toes and guessing who's going to be the, the ones that are selecting them. And then they find out in the letter, so that's another nice piece of that. And then also in the parent square post, we talk about what the activity entailed, which on the next slide has some visuals of that. So we have three of our celebrations here. Starting on the left is our growth mindset celebration. We took a picture with each of the kids and they were, each had a growth kit. So this one, we were really excited about. They got home with some small gardening tools, some seeds, some instructions of how to plant them, and some aspirations of warmer weather and spring ahead. So that's nice. We just had that one at the end of January. In the middle there is our respect for recess. So the core value was respect. I think specialists and interventionists nominated these students. And we had a 20-minute additional respect recess where students got to celebrate for respectable behavior. And then lastly, on the right here is a picture of taken from our kindness celebration that was held in the calf. Students got to make bracelets, do some drawing, some coloring. And at the end, we had them each take a picture with their classroom award. And that's another piece of this is that we've not only shared with the caregivers, but we want to recognize it within our school. So you see Sabrina there and she's holding her classroom award. Teachers have been posting that outside on the doors, inside the classroom, and it's just another way to recognize all the wonderful achievements our students do. And lastly, I kind of want to go back to the parent letter and share one in particular and I'm going to invite Mr. Robert up here. Robert Newton was a student that was nominated by Ms. Sebelski, who is one of the people that brought this idea to us. Robert, if you want to come over here, I want to share what Ms. Sebelski said. She said, "Robert is always working so hard and is very positive each and every day. He puts forth 100% effort in every assignment. He is a role model to all students in my classroom. So proud of you, Robert, Ms. Sebelski." So I wanted to ask you, Robert, maybe how did it feel to be nominated and what's your favorite part of the MMM that we just kind of shared about?
My favorite part of the MMM is the end song. It's really good.
That's awesome. That's awesome. And do you have anything else to add about the MMM? You got the growth mindset, right?
Yeah.
And that was a, what did we do for an activity? Did we have people do the snowball race?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I can share. We had a, for the growth mindset celebration, Robert and his fellow students were able to go into the gym and we set this awesome relay race up with colorful snowballs, papers. And in each paper had a message, right? And what you had to do with that message is you had to figure out, is it a growth mindset or is it a fixed mindset, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was really fun. Students did such a great job on that and, and did you have fun?
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome. Well, I'm glad. It sounds like we're doing an okay job on this thing, right? Awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much. And thank you, school committee members.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any, any questions? Mr. Kingston?
If you could let us know when the next one is, if I can, I can get it into my schedule, I'd really like to come by. I think it might be fun.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, the celebration or the Zoom, so we have that two parts, right?
I'd try for, I would try for both parts if I could, but if I can get one, yeah. I mean, you know, schedule permitting, I don't want to promise, but I would do my best. Thank you.
No problem.
Sure, I would just add that I think you can all attest to the power of positive reinforcement. You know, we try to be, I know I'm a huge advocate of firmness and in, but at the same time, we have to strike a balance, right? With the positive reinforcement and you guys are a great example of what you're doing over there. So thank you, this is wonderful. This brought a smile to my face and it's, it's, it's good to see and it's good to see happy kids learning, so thank you.
Mr. Kingston?
I just also want to thank the teachers who put the extra time in to make this happen. I really appreciate that you, what you're doing and I know the kids do and I just want to say thank you. I don't think we say thank you often enough and I want to make sure that I do. Thank you.
Thank you all. Dr. Kelly, the next item?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job, Whelan team. The next item on the superintendent's report is a presentation from Mr. Bowen and this is kind of a, an update from the different status reports that we've had throughout the last year. And changes that we think that are starting to emerge from the redesign of the high school that's the school committee supported a year ago. And also I know Mr. Bowen is going to bring us down the path of some future planning to see what's coming next. So I'll get that, one pair of this thing will cooperate with me. Alright.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I've passed out just some handouts, there's copy of the slides as well as some data that I'm going to refer to. I figure it's just easier to see kind of up close on paper. I was hoping to bring you through sort of a quick tour of some data that we've been looking at and are just kind of proud of in terms of some impact that we've seen over the course of the, this past few school years. Give you a little bit of insight into sort of how some of the structural changes and programmatic changes that we've made have led to some of that impact. And then talk a little bit about where we're headed this spring into next school year because we've got a lot of kind of interesting and fun design team work going on and I'm excited to share that out with you. So the first thing I just want to highlight is, I believe you asked in the summer, as we returned to having homogeneously grouped classes for honors designation as well as continued with allowing students to earn the core, or the honors designation in core classes. I just wanted to share out at the end of semester one where we landed with that. So you'll see the percentage of students who opted to take honors sections across different grade levels. And you'll also see in the right-hand column, the percentage of students that also chose to take or pursue an honors designation in a core class for a variety of reasons. So there's, there could be a student in the left column and the right column that check off both boxes, if that makes sense. You'll notice that as we get into the 11th and 12th grade, those percentages decrease. That is not students taking fewer advanced coursework, it is just that they're taking other kinds of advanced coursework, which is what I'll move on to the next slide. We have and have continued to have a very high participation rate in students who take advanced coursework, whether that's advanced placement courses, early college courses, dual enrollment courses. The breakdowns are sort of by different, different subgroup. And I think what's interesting and what I'm particularly proud of, if you, if you go on our DESI website and you look at sort of how our school's participation in advanced coursework compares to surrounding districts, surrounding schools, districts that we work with, we do very well. We have a very high percentage of our students that are taking advanced coursework and we get sort of credit from the Department of Education for that in our accountability and so forth. So just wanted to share that about honors and about other forms of advanced coursework for last year. Advanced placement also is another one of those. We had, you know, close to 600 tests taken last year. Almost 60% of students that took tests earned passing rates of either three, four, or five as that score, which we're just very proud of. So we've got students taking dual enrollment courses, advanced placement courses, other early college courses, and doing well when they take them. It's not just that we're having lots of students take these courses, but they're prepared for that test and those scores have increased just steadily since our return from pandemic. If we go on to the next slide, I wanted to kind of reference a little bit of MCAS data. Not the only thing that drives our work, but it is something that we look at. And I know there's been a lot of talk in the news recently about just sort of like the state of student learning in the four years since the return, you know, from the pandemic and the return to in-person school. And I think one of the things that I like to focus in on is this metric that the state gives us, which is called student growth percentile. I think many of you are familiar with that. And what that lets you do is sort of not compare the total, total level of proficiency of an individual student or an individual school, but it helps compare students', students' growth from where they were the last time they took the test compared to students who performed similarly on that test the last time, if that makes sense. And one of the things that I'd like to just point out is if you go back to the first year we administered MCAS right after the pandemic, the growth that we saw from the previous time was around 43 for ELA and pretty low, 30% growth shown in that first year post-pandemic. And if you look at where we were last year, our growth in the ELA test for those students that took it last year was at 54%, which is outperformers, above average, above performance in the state, and 51% for math. So like our, our growth over those four years, not in the overall proficiency, but in terms of the growth individual students have shown compared to where the growth we saw right when we turned, returned from the pandemic, I think is pretty, pretty striking. We had a 75% increase in our math growth since that first year that we returned back and about 25% increase in that growth in ELA. So I just think that some of these unique measures of how students perform are worth talking about and I wanted to lift that up. You'll see on the slide and the paper that I gave you, I think, Dr. Kelly, there's a handful of slides. You can go back to the one, the list of schools. I threw together just some data from some local schools that we often kind of compare ourselves to, not in a competitive sense, but there's a few ways we compare. So there's schools that we work with closely, like for example, in the five district partnership, there's schools in the GLB, the Greater Boston League, in terms of who we compete with. There's schools that DESI basically identifies for us as similar schools, right? Similar in terms of the size, in terms of the population of students, in terms of a variety of factors. And then some other schools that I just thought were interesting comparisons for us to look at. And so I just wanted to share some data in relation to some of this that I shared in terms of how we're doing compared to some other schools, if that's okay. So if you go, I'm going to go, sorry, Dr. Kelly, can you go one slide before? That's right, one slide, continue into the, into the, I'm sorry. So go back to, I apologize. Go back to the one, the, the growth percentile slide, the one that we were looking at right before, one more. Sorry. There you go. Two points that I just want to point out to folks in the room and on the committee. When we, the two pages that show us the kind of change in our growth for ELA and the change in our growth for math compared to all of those other schools that I put, we are second in highest growth for those schools in math and we are first in those schools for highest growth in ELA. I apologize about that. Sorry. That isn't the next thing that we are going to look at. And so it will, we'll talk about sort of our attendance as well. When we look at how our restructuring and the work we've been doing to try to decrease chronic absenteeism, one kind of area of focus that I want to zoom in on is a metric that the state gives us, which is called the lowest performing student subgroup. And what that does is if you picture, let's say there's 100 students in a school. The state sort of zooms in on the bottom performing 25% or 25 of those students. Sometimes removes students who are maybe very newly arrived or have moved around, students who've been with us for a period of time and uses that cohort of students to compare how they're doing over time. And if we look at sort of the change that we've seen for that bottom or the lowest performing subgroup of our students, our chronic absenteeism among that group of students in the 22, 23 school year was almost 55% of students being chronically absent in that subgroup. And at the end of last year, that went down to about 33%. That's not, that is not our change in chronic absenteeism school-wide, right? We're still, that is, absenteeism is a struggle across the board in, in, in all schools and we're still working on that. But I think that the point I want to highlight here is that we've kind of been very intentional using our support structures, our programs, some new roles to sort of target our energy on a certain group of students that are in need of support. And we've used this sort of lowest performing subgroup to target. And it's, we've had some really good results, not only in terms of their growth percentages that we've seen that I was just referencing, but also in terms of that attendance improvement. And so this same, this larger package just sort of gives that same, that same metric across all of those schools. You can kind of see how we compare the work that we've done that has impacted the chronic absenteeism for that lowest performing group compared to the changes seen for that same group in all of those other schools.
If I may just, from the...
Of course.
What, what have you done, what other things have it done to allow you to decrease the chronic absenteeism?
So I mean, I think that the point that I'd like to make here is that we've sort of like targeted, or targeted sounds like the wrong word. We focused energy and attention on a group of students that was, I think, previously sort of slipping through the cracks, right? sort of slipping through the cracks, right? That's also not to say that there are plenty of students who are still struggling in school, right? But I think that we were, in our other structure, we were sort of putting out every fire that popped up, right? And I think fires still pop up, obviously, and we're still dealing with that. But we sort of have a more cohesive structure for how when a fire pops up and someone's dealing with that fire that popped up, people are not dropping the ball on the other group of students that is sort of like, not necessarily on fire, but still struggling, right? And I think that that group of 25%, that lowest performing group, was a group that prior to our structure sort of really slipped through the cracks. The 71% of kids that are taking advanced coursework, they were doing fine, right? And the students that we were focusing energy on that were really struggling, we were putting a lot of energy into that group. I think what our restructuring has let us do is sort of be more steady and more consistent with how we focused on a core group of students. Still not everybody, and I think that's a thing that we'll talk about in a bit, but that was slipping through the cracks before. And so I think that's sort of what I attribute to that change that we've seen.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good. I just, if you go to the next slide, I think a few, three sort of key things I just want to highlight that kind of, Mr. Cajiano sort of answered your question there, our student support team, so the assistant principal leads their team, and they meet together on a weekly basis for about 80 minutes. Part of that work is really meeting with kids, with families, kind of having, developing like support plans. Sometimes they'll meet and they'll talk about a bunch of students that they have, they're concerned about. Sometimes they'll meet and they'll case conference one student, and they'll bring the family in, they'll bring some teachers in, they'll bring the student in, and they'll make a pretty thorough plan of what they're going to do to support that student, what the student's going to do, kind of circle back to that plan about six or eight weeks out. And so we've had about maybe 45, 50 of those plans across the five teams this year, we're halfway through the year. And those are sort of like intense support plans for a group of students. So that, that kind of proactive planning is part of, I think, what contributes to that. We have the support specialist role, which is the interventionist on each team. They work with, they work with all of the students who are on their team in various different ways that pop up, but they also sort of carry this caseload of about 20 to 25 students each, and they're sort of doing sort of more intense case management of that particular group. And if progress is shown, they might work a little bit less with that student and take on someone else. It's not, it's not like they're working with the same group forever, but they're sort of able to dedicate time to that. But if you do that across five teams, we're talking 125 students, right? On top of students that are also having these more comprehensive support plans that are just multiple people involved in. And then we have the BRIGHT program, which is the transition back from students who've been hospitalized, often for mental health concerns. We've only, this is through January, that's only six months of school, and we've had 13 students who have transitioned back this year after having some mental health concerns that obviously interrupts their schooling. And I think that's a, that is a very time-intensive support to help students in terms of their mental health and in terms of getting caught up academically. If we go to the next slide, there's a few other programs that we've worked on building with your support. We've launched the Career Development Program, is like an extension of our internship program. And so this, the Career Development Program works with a group of students who are struggling to balance school and work at the same time. And so we have a cohort of about 30 students, 28 currently the second semester, another 28 first semester, who are, they take some courses in the morning, they have some work-study experiences, and then they have a seminar with an advisor who really keeps on them in terms of their academics, but also doing career exploration and so forth to kind of keep them engaged. Another 35 students this semester who are doing like a work-study experience with them on top of the 60 students that we have doing internships, who are typically maybe a little more academically inclined and don't need sort of like the academic support. And I just, this is less support, but I just want to highlight, we've had 100 students this school year taking dual enrollment courses. We've had 10 students through the Gateway to College program, which is sort of an alternative program at North Shore Community College, which you support. There's 10 seats that we have there. It helps students who just sort of, this isn't the thing for them in terms of the big high school. They get to start their college classes at North Shore early, and they do a really great job there. It's a great sort of dropout prevention program. And we have, right now, we're proud to have, we have 120 students enrolled in our early college program. Since last spring when that launched, those students have earned 645 credits total, saving, if those students were to transfer to UMass Boston, this was the number that Carolyn Gary and I were looking at this morning, if they were to transfer to UMass Boston, they would have collectively saved $516,000. And so those are sort of kind of giving students options of like how they build a portfolio of what courses they can take. And so, oh yeah.
Quick question. The 10 students that have taken advantage of the Gateway to College, are we doing anything to promote that more, or are we limited in the number of spots that we have?
So we pay for seats. I believe each spot is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there. It's a great program, and so if you want to give me more seats, I'd love to. No, it's a great program.
All right, thank you.
And then if we go to the next slide, I'll just talk a little bit about some sort of, oh, this is a good one, thank you. We are doing, as part of the Career Development Program in our internship fair, we're doing a career and trade fair, and I just wanted to give you all the date, because I know this was the thing that happened last spring, and people were excited about it, so I wanted you to mark your calendars. So it's March 18th. We have a bunch of different folks coming in from different unions, from different career areas, so that students can kind of get a sense of what jobs might be out there after college, what training programs are out there after high school. And we're very excited about that. So that's our Career Development Program Coordinator, Tara Mitchell, and is collaborating with Mr. Visconti in City Hall to host that. So we're excited about her work here to get that done. This is just a little celebration. These are all the colleges that students in the class of 2025 have been accepted to early decision. So we've still got more rolling in, but this is where we are right now. We've got a full list to you in May, but these are our early decision schools so far. We're excited about many of those. There's a full list. I think I gave you the full list in the packet. And just four sort of quick updates on some future planning that we're doing, and I'm just very excited about all four of these projects. So we are working with an organization called Redesign, which is a group that helps schools design new school models. This is from funding that you've given us the past few years. And we're really looking to kind of coordinate all of the different programs that we have. When we talk about internship, we talk about blended learning online, we talk about college classes, we talk about work-study, trying to kind of like be more cohesive about, how do we provide personalized learning pathways for students who the four-period block schedule like isn't the thing, right? And I firmly believe that we don't need like an, we don't need, I feel like people often talk about alternative pathways as, oh, we need to like send these students over there. No, we need to provide flexibility, we need to provide engaging experiences, and we need to provide wraparound supports for students who just need to do things differently. And I think one of the things I love about working in a school that is focused on being competency-based and awarding, thinking about competency-based progression, is that we can really work with students, where are they at, what do they know, what do they need to learn, how do we get them credit for what they know, and help them move on to the next thing. And so we've got a design team. Our kickoff meeting launches this Thursday. I invited Dr. Garcia, I think he's going to join us. And I'm very excited about getting that pathways program up and running next year. We have another group working on career concentrations. That's sort of in our foresight to the new high school. We've got the five different career areas that we're trying to build out. We spent time this year thinking about like, what does a pathway look like? We're starting to design a little bit more clearly around what are the different five pathways look like? What partners might we want to be partnering with? What electives might we want to start offering next year? We've got a few grants we're looking at to support some of that work. And so that's a spring project. It's kind of getting a clear vision for our future career concentrations by the end of this spring, to be able to at least have a rough idea of what we're building towards. We are launching tomorrow a scheduled redesign team. So we've got a handful of educators in the high school who have volunteered to be part of this group to help me and my administrative team look at like what changes to our current schedule might we want to consider to provide more flexibility, to provide more options. And so there's like a whole contract process we go through with that, but the first part is launching this design team, so that kicks off tomorrow. And we have our accreditation visit at the end of the month, early April. So our visitors from NIESC will be with us. And what I am very excited about, particularly with this visit, is how sort of three things collide here. We've got the feedback we will get from them on the progress we've made the past three years and things we need to do next. We have the district's strategic design plan for the next five years district plan, and like those, the timing couldn't be better, right? Because we get to take their feedback, incorporate that into the district's plan. And then we're like working towards building the new high school with all of these things. So like, we have three sort of separate design feedback plans happening that will, I think, come together to be a really nice four-year plan for like what takes us to close out this building and move to Wonderland. And so very excited about all that.
Mr. Kingston.
Mr. Bowen, could you explain, the page is outnumbered, so I apologize.
I apologize about that.
No, no, it's school year 2002, for AP exam performance at RHS. Can you explain the two columns? I'm just not getting it.
Oh, of course, yep. That is in the slideshow. So the, these are just, the one big table just split into two columns, so you can see. So you'll see that like, for example, we had 597 tests that were taken, AP exam tests, and 58% of those students who take those tests got passing scores. Students did best in our AP US History course, with 90% of students who took that course getting a passing score.
All be it a low number of students in the course.
Correct, right. There were 10 students that took that course. We looked to the English Lit and Com course, there were 27 students that took that course, and 85% of those 27 got a passing score of three, four, or five. Does that make sense? And so it's just kind of sorted by.
It was confusing me was the number on the left is.
Yeah, the number on the left is the number, number of tests taken, and the number of right is the percent that scored that. I apologize.
I know the three to five is passing, I get that. I just didn't see the, so, okay. I was just trying to figure out how many, because the top number was a little, the 597 and the 58 was.
Yeah, so 58% of those 597 tests were passing scores.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Cajiano?
Since we instituted the honors program last year, how is that working out? I mean, as far as.
Turn off, turn off my microphone. We've had a, I think, two things that I'm happy about, like we've got a large number of students who have opted into taking those classes, and we've had a large number of students at each grade level who have also chosen to pursue an honors designation in that core course, right? So I think to me what that speaks to is kids having options of what they do and how they pursue advanced coursework and doing that. So students who want to take that separate honors section have been doing that in pretty good numbers. Students who wanted to, maybe in math they wanted to do that, but in ELA they wanted to work it a different way, that's kind of how that's playing out. And then we layer on college classes, dual enrollment classes as well, so overall, well.
Thank you.
If I could add also a comment for that. A lot of the freshmen and sophomore that I have talked to this year, when it's come to thinking about advanced placement courses, is there is a high interest. So not only is the introduction of these honors classes super effective for students who want to try out a course or see if they're interested in the high coursework, it is also helping students to direct themselves towards advanced placement classes such as AP US History, in which I've gone the pleasure of telling students about and trying to advocate for that class more. So that's just like an extra comment that I wanted to add, but I think that along with that, the honors classes have made trying out certain subjects very flexible in our school.
One comment I'd just say in response to that, I think it's also interesting, though, to think about as students have had the option to maybe take an honors course versus an AP course, as they've taken honors courses, some of our enrollment in some of the advanced placement courses has gone down a little bit, right? So when we think, yeah, we might have the honors course numbers raised, that when we look at like our accountability and what accounts as advanced coursework, an honors course doesn't count as advanced coursework. What counts is the college course or the AP course. So it'll be interesting to see at the end of this year how many AP tests were taken compared to the 597 when students had some option to not take the AP course and take the honors course. We will see that probably in July or August.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Great job. Next up on the superintendent's report is really just a series of brief updates that I wanted to give the committee. The first is on the new high school. Just a reminder that we do have a school building committee meeting tomorrow night. Anybody who would like to attend can do so via Zoom. But the good news is that the owners' project manager, finance consultant, and the construction manager's finance consultant spent the day today reconciling anticipated costs, and it looks like we're coming out right at or right below the anticipated budget for construction. This is just for construction, not for the whole project. The whole project is still budgeted at $493 million, excluding the $4 million we've already spent on feasibility. But the construction budget is coming in at about $411 to $412 million, which is what we anticipated. So that's good news that we're coming in on budget for the construction itself. And we are on track for bidding to go out next month, in March, to send bids out to start contracting the subcontractors who are actually going to do the demolition work, and we anticipate the site demolition will begin in late April or early May. So on target, on budget, onward we go. The next was just an update on the Romney Marsh Academy, and I'm going to pass the sheet out. It's just a, it's just a quick summary. And just to review what we talked about before with their accountability status, we've been working with the Department of Education and with the Great Schools Partnership, and the focus in, of their work has been on making sure lessons are grounded in materials and tasks aligned to grade-level content standards and practices, lessons are grounded in a clear purpose that is visible and/or shared or co-constructed by students, and that all students are doing the majority of the thinking during the lesson in service of grade-level standards. So rather than the teacher doing all of the work, we're seeing the students do the work so that they're actually learning. And with Great Schools and with DESI, the two main tweaks that we've made at Romney Marsh Academy, the first is a weekly coach meeting with caseloads for cycles of observation support and the rollout of new planning routines during PGT, where teachers are planning together on structuring their lessons. So since January 13th, you'll recall that we spent the first half of the year figuring out what the focus should be and doing learning walks to understand that better. Since January 13th, we put into practice the weekly coach meetings and the rolling out of the new routines in PGT. The administrative team has done 140 classroom observations, and the coaches have done 120 peer observations. And Dr. Macabre, myself, and the team over at Romney did a second round of observations with DESI on January 30th. And just some brief data on the bottom of this page, when we observed in all of those observations, the 140 that the administrators did, the 120 that the coaches did, and the walkthroughs that we did with DESI, we were all focused on these three metrics. What did we see in these three areas? And for each one of them, we asked ourselves, you know, are the lessons, tasks rigorous and aligned to grade-level standards and practices? Yes, somewhat, or no? And if you look at the table here, the answer to that question, in January, when we first started collecting the data, we only saw yes, the lesson tasks are rigorous and aligned to grade-level standards in 35% of the classes. By February 10th, that had jumped to 50%. Yep.
Was feedback provided between January 13th and February 10th?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, feedback was provided every time there were observations done. And then likewise for that same question, because, you know, you're often going to see somewhat these things happening because different things impact how a lesson goes or what exactly we see when we observe, maybe the, maybe something had happened earlier that we missed or was coming up, so we try to take that into account. But I'm really excited that the answer no to that question, are lessons, tasks rigorous and aligned to grade-level standards, the no went from 11% to 3%. So that's impressive. And then in the second metric, the lessons grounded in clear purpose, visible, shared, or co-constructed, you know, agenda with students, when the yes went from 32% to 45, which is great, we've seen some increase there, still room to grow, of course. And the noes went from seven to 13. So that was a little bit of a one-off. We're not thrilled with that metric, but, you know, we'll keep collecting the data and see what happens over time. And this is, this is comparing one particular week, January 13th to 17th, all of the observations that happened on that week to all of the observations that happened the week of February 10th to 14th, which I will point out is was the week before vacation, and that can sometimes create some irregularities also. But it was the most recent week that we had a full set of data for. So we'll see if these trends continue as we continue to collect the data. And just quickly reviewing the third metric, are all students doing the majority of the thinking during the lesson in service of grade-level standards? Went from, yes, went from 14% to 32. Went from, yes, went from 14% to 32, um, so almost doubled, which is great, and the no fell in half, from 16% to 8%.
Milbarielle?
Dr. Kelly, are there dates scheduled for the next round of observations already?
With DESI?
Um, whoever, whether it's admin or whoever.
So, so the admin and, um, the admin and the coaches have a regular schedule that they do every day. They're in classrooms, they rotate through, it's a different class, different rooms every day, that's how they have so many, the 140 and the 120.
Okay.
Um, so they're doing that on a daily basis, and then, um, the rounds of observations that Dr. Mokab and I are doing with our consultants from DESI, uh, and Great Schools, and with that team, the coaches and the, and the administrators walk with us as well, um, we'll do another round of those in the late spring. And so the idea is to see where we were in the fall, where we identified, here, here are the things we should work on, where are we now at the midpoint of the year, and where will we be, um, in probably May, I think is when we'll do the, the last.
Thank you.
View.
Mr. Kingston?
If we, if we don't achieve growth again, what happens next?
Um, great question. Um, I think if we don't achieve greater growth this year on MCAS, um, then the state will continue to work with us. Um, they've been a phenomenal partner, they're not coming at this work with a stick or a carrot, it's more, we're partners, let's figure this out, let's do what's right for kids. Um, so it's been great to work with them on this endeavor, and it's nice to have the little bit of money that they've given us, which is actually paying for the Great Schools Partnership, for them to come in, um, and there's some money there for teacher professional development as well, and curriculum development, um, which we've been able to hire teachers, and we'll be able to hire them this summer, to do some of that work outside of the school day, uh, because there's not a ton of time, obviously, to do that during the school day, um, and naturally, teachers should be paid for the work that they do. Um, so we appreciate that partnership and the opportunity that it provides that we wouldn't otherwise have. Um, and I would say that if we didn't come out of the area where we are, we are below 10%, um, then, then DESI would maybe give us some more supports, or, but I'm confident that the teachers and the staff at the Romney are making the kinds of changes that are going to help our kids achieve at higher rates.
Thank you.
Um, the next thing I wanted to share is actually just a little bit of foreshadowing. We got the, um, uh, as you know, DESI comes in and does a massive evaluation of all of our program work every three years, um, and it's called the Program Quality Audit, um, which they conducted over the course of the fall, and we just got the preliminary results. I don't have the final results yet, um, I will share those once we have the official report from DESI, um, but on the preliminary report, they measured us in, let me see here, I should have counted these before, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, different, uh, criteria, um, and they cleared us on 29 of them and said, everything you're doing is on point, keep doing that. Um, there were two areas that they, uh, gave us some, um, corrective action for, and the first one was the use of physical restraint on any student enrolled in a public-funded educational program. Um, they said what we had in place is appropriate and correct, um, but our policy to date has been that teachers sign off on the faculty handbook, which includes our restraint policy at the start of the year, and they said that's not significant enough evidence that they actually read it. So what we're gonna do, uh, what we've proposed for that corrective action, is that the principals will actually review that policy with the principals at their opening day meeting, and that should.
Sign off.
Yeah, hopefully that, that will clarify. The next step in this process is that, um, we get the official report from DESI, and then we meet with them and say, this is what we're planning to do to correct that issue, and they approve it or not.
Same thing.
Yeah. Um, the second area that they caught, that they cited us for, uh, was curriculum review. In the statute, this is actually in Massachusetts general law, not in the federal, um, is that the district ensures that individual teachers in the district review all educational and instructional materials for simplistic and demeaning generalizations lacking intellectual merit on the basis of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national or, origin, and sexual orientation, um, et cetera. And, uh, although they appreciated the work that we've been doing in our curriculum review panels, um, they said that it didn't meet the metric to show that every individual teacher, for every different individual lesson that they are giving, um, has actually engaged in that kind of review. Um, I struggle with this one a little bit, to be honest with you, because, um, I don't know how we would collect that data, other than to ask teachers to just sign an affidavit saying that they do it. Um, we're, we're still trying to figure this one out, and hoping that DESI will have some guidance for us on how we can better achieve that metric, um, and maybe track the data without putting, my concern is I don't want to put more.
On the teachers.
Burden on teachers, exactly. They're working hard enough without, um, having to somehow demonstrate that they're doing these kinds of reviews, um, when we know that they're doing them.
Well, unless I'm mistaken, isn't that what we have a curriculum director for, is to, is to review the materials before it even reaches?
We do, and that's what our curriculum directors do, and that's what they are saying, that's all great, you're on point there. Um, I'm gonna use Mr. Fellows as an example, because he's sitting here tonight, but, um, what they're saying is, how do you know that Mr. Fellows didn't give out a worksheet that somehow was biased or discriminated against a student? Because we don't monitor every worksheet that Mr. Fellows is using in his class. That's his decision. So we, we have to work with the state on this metric a little bit, um, we'll see what they come back to us, uh, and see if there's a reasonable solution to that. But my, my push on the state is going to be looking for something that is reasonable and doesn't overburden teachers.
Doesn't restrict them either.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Kingston?
Could, is it, I think your solution about having the teachers sign something that they're not, but would they have to agree to that?
The state would have to agree to that, so.
Would we have a hard time getting the teachers to agree to that?
Oh, I don't think so, I, I, I mean, I.
No, I think that's a good solution, because I don't know how else you could do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it would be something saying that the materials are compliant with what.
Exactly, right, yeah. So, I don't know, more to come on that, and I'll let you know as soon as we get the final report. Yeah. Um, and then the last item on the superintendent's report is, um, just an update on ESK, which we've talked about each month, the dates are quickly approaching, um, they're gonna be in district, as Principal Bowen mentioned, from March 30th to April 2nd. Um, and one thing that the chair did ask of us is that, um, there'd be availability for them to meet with at least two school committee members. More than two can meet with them if you want, uh, but if it's, but we should think about whether or not you want this to have to be a public, open meeting, if there's a quorum of the committee, or if you want to identify a couple of representatives who could attend the meeting, it would be virtual on Zoom. Um, they're looking to do that on March 31st, late afternoon or early evening, um, and they're looking for a time from the committee that would be appropriate for that meeting, and then also a decision of if you want it to be everybody with an open meeting, or did you want to identify a couple of representatives who could speak for the committee?
I think we have some members who aren't here, seconds in an email, see who's interested, and then based on that, if it's a quorum, then we can decide if it's an open meeting, or we can just have one or two people who may not have as many responsibilities as others join in, so we can really divide and conquer all that we're doing. So I'll send that email out to coordinate everyone for scheduling purposes.
Thank you.
Um, and then just a very last thing, I just want to thank, um, Jackie and Stacy, who have agreed to be on the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, that committee is meeting tomorrow night for the first of their six sessions, um, and, uh, we're really excited to move forward. We had, um, 27 parents and community members join the virtual, um, focus group last night, um, and the consultant said that that was, I, I was kind of thinking, I was wishing there would be more, but she said they normally only get seven or eight people, so she was pretty impressed that we had, um, almost 30, so, um, the process is underway and will continue. And then the other audit that we're doing on, um, the school safety audit, the consultant reached out to Richie yesterday and said he had a few of his team members who were on vacation, and they'll be in touch by the end of the week with a schedule. So moving forward on both of those fronts.
Ms. Milbarielle?
We're on the strategic planning, I, I may be mistaken, so forgive me if I'm wrong, but I received notice in the morning that the meeting was happening that night, so if there, if there.
We sent three notices.
Okay, then forgive me.
So, that's okay, that's all right. So that was the third one, um, that we sent out, yesterday morning, we sent out the third notice.
Okay, then I take that back.
I won't take it back, I didn't see the first two either.
I know you guys say this to me, but I can't, I mean, I can go back into the, um, portal and, they're in, they're in John's newsletters.
We have to read through the newsletters that are put out in print square.
That could be it.
If you'd like me to be somewhere, it's something other than.
Well, it was for, it wasn't for school committee members specifically, it was.
It was for the community.
Community and parents.
I'm sorry, no, I probably didn't read.
It was also, um, posted on our website and on the, uh, school calendar website. So we don't have any hearings next, it's just, uh, we only had one subcommittee meet between our January meeting and this one, so I'll pass it to Mr. Cagiano if there's any updates from safety and security.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we had a meeting on January 29th, it was attended by myself, the safety committee, which was John Kingston, Ms. Milbarielle, along with Dr. Kelly, Dr. Sluci, Chief Callahan, Acting Chief James Cullen, our SROs, and Principal Bowen. Uh, what was on the agenda was to review what happened on 2024, and our SRO deployment, deployment on 2025. I think the committee felt we needed to have a meeting on this, because let the parents know and the public know exactly what's going on, and what we've done in '24, and where we're going in '25. And, uh, we're all in agreement that it was, we are going in the right direction, but we still need more work to be done. Mr. Bowen made a presentation of all the stats, as far as discipline goes, uh, expulsions and so on. Chief, uh, uh, Callahan spoke on the air as far, as far as what he did in 2024, and how it changed a lot of the school environment. Also, Dr. Kelly spoke as far as an overview, and going forward, uh, as far as the safety consultant in 2025. And we did add, uh, add an SRO that, uh, in 2025 also. And so far, it seems like the ten, uh, the temperament of the stu, you know, the students in general, everything, everybody feels safe. That's one of the most important things when we got elected, was people talked about student safety, as well as quality of our academics, and I think we are going in the right direction. And I end my report.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the committee? Okay. Hearing none, uh, we don't have any motions listed, is there any unfinished business from the committee? Uh, members, if I may, I do have one item that I was thinking about as we heard the high school report, specifically around, uh, the cell phone policy, so I think, as a committee, we've tried, our high school leadership team has tried, our teachers have tried to do their best to implement this policy, but the issues persist, and so I realize at this time, it's not the policy that's the issue, or the lack of effort for implementation, but just how widespread the use of cell phones is. And so I'd like to make a motion for the Ways and Means Subcommittee to conduct a feasibility assessment on the cost of yonder pouches, to see if we could afford them and include them in the next fiscal year. And so if they say, you know, the Ways and Means says we can afford them, then we'll come back, we'll have a conversation with the whole community, we'll open it up to folks, we'll then, you know, meet in the policy subcommittee to revise the policy, but first I want to see, can we afford this, and is this a step we need to take, because the adults are doing the best they can, and I really don't want to hear more teachers say, I'm rethinking high school grades, because I don't want to be the cell phone police anymore. So that is my motion, do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I.
Mr. Kingston?
If not put Mr. Bowen on the spot, but I'd ask him what he thinks about the yonder
If you want.
I think that you should speak to the superintendent about these matters before.
Okay, it wasn't my motion. I just thought he was in the room, and I thought it was a propos. That's fine.
Anything else? So this would just be the first step, let's see, like, is it something we can afford before we have the conversation, so we don't have to backtrack, and then we have the conversation, we decide it, but we don't have the money, so, just to start it.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm all for exploring ways in which to improve, um, upon this policy that, you know, we've put into effect, but it, it still comes down to enforcement. And so, I, I am sorry if teachers feel that they're being the cell phone police, but sometimes as the adults in the building, that is, that is the job, you know? If, if it's a matter of they're not feeling supported by the administration, and I'm not saying that's the case, then that's a whole different issue, because only, I'm only saying this because we're talking about enforcement in the chain of command and how that works, but I, I, I'm not giving up on enforcement by any means. The adults in the building need to enforce the policy, there are children, and there are adults, and young adults, but we need to, we need to enforce our policies. Um, but I am open to exploring and doing whatever we can to help the teachers and, and the adults in the building.
And I just, I want to add to that, that I am very much aware that there are some teachers who don't have these challenges.
Okay, um, thanks, so can we have a roll call on the referral to Subcommittee for Exploration?
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo? Mr. Anthony Cagiano?
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Aisha Milbarielle?
Yes.
Ms. Jacqueline Monterosso?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick Sanala?
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kiff?
Okay, motion to referral to Subcommittee passes. Um, the last item on our agenda for under new business is the resolution for Safe Haven. This is, um, something that I proposed, so I'll just give the background for it, and then I'll make a motion, there'll be a second, then we can discuss, um, how people want to move, so, I propose this resolution, we've heard from students today, we've, uh, gotten so many emails, over 30 emails, and not a single student, teacher, parent, or community member has spoken out against it. This resolution isn't something that's out of the ordinary, uh, but a simple restatement of the law, a restatement of the guidance already put out by the state attorney general and our district policies. While it's nothing new or controversial, because we're just restating the law, um, and students' rights, it does speak to the volume and message that it sends of support and solidarity to our school community, community. Brown versus Board of Education states that all students have a right to equal education. In 1982, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in Plyler versus Doe that the right of undocumented students to attend public school is guaranteed in the U.S. Constitution. If we have students and parents in fear, just like they share today, because they don't know where our district stands, because almost every district around us has stated publicly that they will uphold the law, but we haven't said anything publicly to our community, then we're failing at our job. This resolution simply states that we're here to uphold the law and create a safe and welcoming space for all our students, so I hope that my colleagues can join me in passing the resolution. So to enter into discussion and hear thoughts, I make the motion to pass the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions, or thoughts from colleagues?
Ms. Milbarielle?
So I've thought about this for some time, because, you know, sometimes, sometimes initiatives at first glance look like, um, the honorable and the right thing to do. And listening to the students who spoke today, what is apparent is that we are not, we could do a better job with informing students and families of what their rights are, and of the protections that are already afforded. As Ms. Monterosso stated, the proclamation itself does not offer any additional protections that are already afforded by the law. It restates the, um, civil liberties that we all have, and undocumented students have in our schools that are already declared safe zones because of the laws that are afforded to the students. I will say that this is, this is nothing new, as Ms. Monterosso indicated, this has been the case since the early 80s. I am concerned, however, that the very people that we're intending to protect are going to be the people who could be harmed by this resolution. I say that because I am giving consideration to the climate that we're in, and my fear is that we will, um, place a, um... is that we will, um, place a, um, I don't want to say highlight, but a strobe light on the very people we're trying to protect. And I don't think that's something that I'm comfortable doing. I don't want to broadcast and get over a megaphone what it is that we're already doing to draw our attention, the type of attention, negative attention, that can come down on these very people, our students and their families. I can go home and, and sleep well at night without that type of fear, but I cannot make a decision that is going to place students or their families in harm's way. I think our best avenue is to inform, educate, and empower families and the students with the information they need to, uh, to, um, uh, diminish those fears that they have. But schools are safe zones. That's mandated by law. Federal ICE agents cannot come into our schools without a warrant, absent extingent circumstances. I'm not aware of ICE agents entering schools or other sensitive spaces such as churches. So, I think we just have to be careful with the misinformation that's out there and with feeding into the fear because that can do us no good. I cannot be a part of something that I feel is going to put the attention on our students and our families in a negative way. Let's think about what that looks like. Let's think about media retention. Let's think about protesters from opposite sides of the political spectrum. I, I don't want that for our students. Right now, we're protecting our students. We're doing what we're supposed to do by law. We haven't had the occasion where we've encountered this, but we have a plan in place. It is outlined in Ms. Monterosso's, um, proclamation. However, I think when you start using political terms like "safe haven," which in public policy and, and the political sphere equates to sanctuary, I think we are putting a target on us. I do not want Revere and our students to be the target of CNN and Fox News. We have the border czar coming to Boston. Why would we put ourselves out there? To me, anyone who knows me will tell you that I am not a political person. This is a, uh, elected position, but I am no politician. I don't subscribe to either the left or the right, but to the issues as they're presented to me, and I use reason and logic. And thinking this through, I am, I'm just not comfortable. I agree with the substance of it, but I think that we're, even having this discussion right now, even this being on the agenda, we're putting our students at risk, that this is going to be something that blows up. And it's not going to affect, it's not going to affect many of us. And the ones who we're trying to protect are the ones who are going to feel the brunt of this. That's how I, that's how I feel about this, um, Ms. Monterosso, with all due respect. I do believe that this is coming from a place of sincerity, and the motive behind it, um, is honorable, but I think we could do the same thing by giving our families the information that they need so our students don't feel the way they do. Based on what they said, it's clear they don't have an understanding of the law. They don't have an understanding of what our procedure is and how we would respond. And I think once provided that information, they will feel empowered and less, less afraid to come to school. So, we have to do our job in educating each other about what's real, what's not real, what's fact, what's law, what protections we have. And I just can't, I hope, I hope you all understand. I cannot, in good conscience, I took this office and I said that I would always do what's in the best interest of all of our students, undocumented, documented, all of our students, my own included, that are in these schools. And this, I do not feel, is in the best interest of our students. So, for that reason, I cannot support it. And I hope you understand. If you have any questions, I'm available to, to explain further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milbarialis. Anyone else?
I do have kind of my own perspective on it, and of course, I respect your opinion 100%, Ayesha. Um, my, I guess maybe you can say that my perspective is something that is more optimistic. And as previously mentioned in this meeting, we have talked about how, unlike our neighboring districts, Revere Public Schools hasn't really let, uh, or put out a public statement, uh, discussing the things that have been happening in our ever-changing society. And I think that rather than putting a target on students' backs, it's reaffirming the protection that our students have, making sure that our community is knowledgeable and understanding of the protections that their students and families have, along with conjoining in solidarity with the other schools who have chosen to put out public statements. Some examples that I have is the Chelsea Public School District in which the superintendent had even posted an op-ed in the Boston Globe. And along with that, the Lynn Public School District has also posted a statement directly to their community discussing the situation and bringing it to light. I am trying to keep this as apolitical as possible, but in my personal opinion, I believe that staying silent is not the right way to go about this. I believe that our students and parents should be notified about what their rights are, should understand that what is happening can very well affect our community. I have seen from friends and other students that ICE is close to our community. I have seen ICE raids in Chelsea. I have seen ICE raids in Lynn. How, I've even seen ICE raids with, like, within our own city in previous years. It is something that is in our community. It is something that our, our community should be knowledgeable about, and it is something that we should be able to speak out against and talk about, be comfortable talking about, rather than being worried and put into fear of being, uh, and basically scared into being silent. I mean, that is my personal belief of it. And again, not to sound like a broken record, but I truly, truly, truly believe that this would only be beneficial for us, coming from somebody who is Hispanic, um, and has had experience in the past with ICE.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Mr. Sanella?
Uh, yes, just to point of information, previous speaker made reference that, um, a neighbor in Chelsea has, um, come out with a statement to protect et cetera, et cetera. But she also mentioned that ICE agents have already been there. My, I guess my question is, we passed this tonight, is it giving false hope to our citizenry? I mean, if ICE shows up, what, do we stop at the gate of the doors and prevent them from entering? Uh, previous speaker made reference that it's the law. So, again, I'm, I'm just wondering, it's kind of a yes, no, no, yes type situation. Or we want to protect them. How can we protect them? I mean, does this motion prevent ICE from coming? Are any federal agent? Can anyone answer me that question?
Yes, Mr. Sanella. So, this motion's only restating our policies, which is that whether it's ICE or police, like, let's say there was a warrant for a student who committed a crime. No one can come into the district without first going to the superintendent. The superintendent speaks to legal counsel and they're verified that there is a judicial warrant signed by a judge. The purpose of this resolution is to make a statement to the community that we are here to uphold such law, because a lot of the concerns I have gotten are that every other district has said, "We're going to abide by the law," but we haven't said anything publicly. We've stayed silent. Yes, we can have our district policy on the website, but a lot of people don't know to go to the website. If we're not putting out district-wide communication to our community, then a lot of parents or students who aren't engaged don't know that we're willing to uphold the law. So, there's an actual policy. This isn't about false hope. It's more of a statement reaffirming that we are here to uphold the law and here to provide a safe space for all students. Does that answer your question?
Oh, but you're mentioning we're going to uphold the law. How can we, as a school committee, uphold the law? Aside from verbalization, which this motion apparently is, is trying to do, um, it, it's been mentioned, we will protect them. We cannot physically protect them if they come in with a warrant, but that is legal matters. I, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something here.
So, if there is a warrant and it is signed by a judge, then it, it falls into the district policy and I'll ha, I'll pass it to Dr. Kelly, she oversees that part. But it's protecting from anything that doesn't follow the law, like the ICE raids or just walking into a school without an actual warrant. So, I'll pass it to Dr. Kelly.
Sure.
If I may ask, if I may ask, the student representative seems familiar with Chelsea. When the ICE agent showed up, did they have warrants to your knowledge?
When I said, uh, ICE raids in Chelsea, I was talking about not in Chelsea Public Schools. I am talking in Chelsea as a community in general. I am sorry for not putting that reference in at first.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, yes, Mr. Cagiano?
Okay. Thank you. I read the resolution and on the Safe Haven, and like I said, I have some mixed emotions. But through the chair, I want to talk to Dr. Kelly. If we vote in favor of this, what changes?
Um, it's, it's really hard to say, and all I can do is give the committee the guidance that I already have given, which I've received from both state and federal officials and people who do this kind of work a lot more frequently than I do. And that i, and their advice was, do the work, keep your head down, protect the kids, do the work, keep your head down. That was their advice. And they're speaking from experience, and I, I don't know what else to say other than that. I have clearly articulated to all of the administrators in the district that that was what we were going to do. We would continue to do right by kids because we always have. Uh, we have the policies and practices in place that protect kids. We have the policy that prohibits anybody, regardless of who you are, from loitering on or hanging around a school property. It doesn't matter what, what kind of a badge you have in your pocket. If you don't have school business there, you don't belong there. Um, as you mentioned, there are some, um, pieces for, if there's a signed warrant by a federal judge, um, then somebody can try to gain access only through my office. They can't go directly to a school building. Um, I feel like the kids are very well protected. We did, uh, Dr. Garcia did a great job in the fall. We held multiple, um, meetings for parents so they could understand what their rights were. We had over 200 families come in, um, and get, and get the know, know your rights information from Mira, who's been a tremendous partner to us. Um, we know that we have more than, um, 200 families in the community that are immigrants, but I don't know that more than 200 of them might be undocumented. So, I don't know what percentage of, um, the people we needed to reach with that information we actually did reach, but I would get a, guess that it's a pretty high number. And I would also guess that, um, they would have shared that information with their, um, with their, uh, friends and family that they knew might need that information as well. So, I can continue to stand by the premise that we can help our kids and protect our kids and keep our kids safe, um, with, without any kind of a grand gesture. Um, I understand how it can make people feel like that's a little bit more transparent, uh, when we stand up and say, "Here we are and this is what we believe." But in this particular climate, in this particular time, I don't know that that benefits the kids that we're trying to protect, because if it brings more scrutiny or it brings people with radical ideations and, and thought processes and we have people standing in front of our school buildings with signs, what does that do to the kids? What does that do to their families? How many parents are going to say, "I'm not sending my kid to school with that nonsense happening out in front of it?" Uh, and that's, I think echoes a little bit what, um, Member Milbarialis was talking about. It's the advice that I've been getting, as I said, from colleagues at the state and national level. Um, we are trying to communicate. I know that all of the principals held voluntary meetings with all of their staff members. Anybody who wanted to come and talk about and hear a little bit more about the philosophy was welcome to do that. I know that in each of their schools, they had a handful to a dozen, um, teachers actually attend those meetings. Um, we've had our family liaisons reaching out to families who might need some specific direct support. Um, and we've asked our social workers and guidance counselors to make sure they're engaging with kids, uh, and providing resources to those kids who are upset or feeling nervous or unsafe, uh, make sure that they have all of the information, um, to share with the students to understand what our position is. Um, so I guess I'll just leave it there.
So, we have reached out to parents and so on, communicated with them?
We have.
Okay.
We've done one-on-one, but we also sent them the guidance from the state, from the governor's office, and sent them the re, the links to the governor's website that had other resources there, um, and identified that as, um, strong information from the state.
So, we're basically doing everything on the resolution for the Safe Haven. Like I said, my, one of my main concerns was to put all these kids in the limelight, and they would be focused at percentage of kids that we're trying to protect. So, that's where I'm not agreeing with this. I agree with the resolution, but I'm not agreeing with putting our kids in the limelight and coming out as a school committee and just instead of staying low-key. And second too is, who knows if there's retaliation when we go for funding? You know, everything's, we, we don't know. We're, we're all in our outside, you know, chartered territory. So, I think, I think silence right now is the best, but to, to, uh, reach out to our students to know we are there and we are, we do want to protect them.
If I could add just one more comment. The reason I am still an advocacy, uh, I'm still advocating for this resolution or, um, is, is mostly because of the students that I'm with, along with some of the stories that I've heard, not just in Revere, but with throughout the country, so nationally. And occasionally, I do like listening to, uh, podcasts from the New York Times, sometimes CNN and other things like that. And there was an interesting episode in which a teacher, I believe an elementary school teacher, was discussing, um, how these new policies enacted by the U.S. government has affected the student population in her school. And she was basically talking about how students in her class were missing school one, day one, day two, day three. And after a bit of concern, once they reached out to those parents and found out that the reason that they are scared of bringing their kids is, is not just because of this fear that ICE may come and try to raid a school or come into sensitive areas, but the possibility that their parents could also be affected. Um, I've heard that some parents are scared of bringing their kids in for possibility of being caught. I mean, what's the worst-case scenario is that you drop your kids off and all of a sudden, there's nobody there to pick your children up. And I think that personally, not making a statement is going to, like, leave the community in the dark, first of all. And I think it could also, we talked about chronic absenteeism. I think that it can also add on to those rates that we are seeing. If people are unaware of what Revere is going to do to protect their rights, there's a higher possibility that people are just going to say, "Actually, no, I'm too scared to go to school for my safety, for my parents' safety. I'm going to stay home. Right now, it's a dangerous time." That's ultimately going to lead to a hike-up, in my opinion, on chronic absenteeism. And again, this is from my experience talking to students, my experience of listening to, uh, discussions from outside of this committee. And I think that this is a way, way more nuanced perspective that I honestly believe that we should talk to not just students that, you know, are hearing these things. I think we should talk to the students directly who are dealing with this, students who have undocumented parents, or students who are undocumented themselves. I think that that's very important for this discussion because we are doing what is for our community and not exactly what we think is best for our commu-, uh, community from our perspectives, if that makes sense.
Um, yes, and then I have a few thoughts as well.
Um, so, I just want to say that I completely agree with you in the sense that we need to do better with educating parents and students on what their rights are. I think that my biggest issue with the proclamation is the language that was, that we're using when we, when we try to, when we say that we're designating ourselves as a safe haven. What that equates to is that we're, um, designating ourselves as a sanctuary district. And what that does is put the limelight on us. That is a, that is a, um, uh, right now, in this climate, if you turn on any news channel, we see what's going on in different parts of the country, what's happening in Maine, what's hap-, you know? I just think that if we're, this is not the time for us to, to make a declaration like that unless we are ready and want to deal with the repercussions, which, like I said, I, I can go to sleep at night and not worry about certain things, but I cannot make a decision that does not give the, the whole student population that's- decision that does not give the, the whole student population that same benefit.
Thank you. So a few points I want to add. First, there's conversation about protest or retaliation. Dozens of cities and districts in the state have already passed similar language, and not one has had people standing outside protesting it or having a spotlight shown on them. We're not the first district.
But two that I'm aware of, Jackie, I want to say, have been absolutely email bombed relentlessly, thousands of nasty, nasty emails all over their schools because they stood up.
Yes, I didn't interrupt you, so please wait. So then, we haven't had, there are protests, the history isn't there. We've actually received communication from students and parents asking us to pass this. Not one member of this community has said, no, we don't want this. I think also, if the issue's the name of the resolution, we can change it, we could resolution for safe schools, resolution for something else. If that's a specific issue, it's just the name, then we can change that, I'm not tied to it. But I'm not proposing a resolution to make us a sanctuary city, they're not conflated because we're not a city, we're not a sanctuary school. Chelsea passed a resolution that said for sanctuary schools, that's not what I'm asking for. And so I think it's also making sure that we are not enabling fear. We are called to be bold and courageous leaders to ensure a safe and welcoming environment for all students. I am the daughter of immigrants, I come from a farmworker community, I taught students who were five years old, separated from their parents when they walked the border, were put into detention center, and then put in my classroom, and only because they had someone who looked like me did they feel like they could walk into the schools. So I today and always will choose to be the bold and courageous leader I was chosen and elected to be, and I can only hope and ask the same of my colleagues. If there's no other thoughts, then we can do a roll call vote.
Dr. Garcia?
Roll call.
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Absent.
Mr. Anthony Cagiano?
No.
Mr. John Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayesha Milbury Ellis?
No.
Ms. Jacqueline Monteroso?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick Sanala?
No.
Mayor Patrick Kiff?
Motion, males? On that, anything else under new business? Okay, then next we have an executive session, so I would like to make a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A for Purpose Two, we will not be returning to open session. Is there a second? Can we have a roll call for executive session?
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Absent.
Mr. Anthony Cagiano?
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayesha Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Jacqueline Monteroso?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick Sanala?
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kiff?
Okay, so we will not be returning, like I said, to open session, so this is the closing of our public meeting and will now move to executive session.